I always say, you know, the whole time I studied government as a high school student and as a college student, to really jump into an election and to figure out, and to me, local politics are, that's where it's at. You know, it's local problems, local systems that impact me and the people in my community every day. It's not distant, it's right here.
So we should clarify for people that you are running for school board. You're running for a seat on, for the Ward five seat on the Stillwater Board of Education, correct?
That's correct.
Tell us a little bit about yourself. Let's just start with that. Like, how did you get to Stillwater?
Yeah, so I'm a farm kid. I was raised on a farming ranch in eastern New Mexico. That got my, my involvement with ag education and FFA was natural as a farm kid. So I was raised in a small rural school, um, got involved in ag education. That took me to, um, I was elected to a state FFA office and served New Mexico in that way. So I got to go to forty-three different schools in New Mexico and present to the youth as a state officer. And so I was going to be a doctor, clearly, you know, one of the three choices when you're in high school, you know? But I went to all these high schools. I took a year off and visited high schools all across New Mexico. I started realizing how different the schools were. I started to see equity gaps. I started to see innovative models that worked, innovative models that didn't. And then again, I was fortunate to be elected to a national FFA office. So I served the western region and for a year I traveled, you know, every, every week for a full year. I just traveled and flew around the country, um, meeting with schools, meeting with students, promoting ag education, promoting career and technical education. And as a student, from a twenty-year-old's perspective, and so I spoke at banquets. I spoke with principals and administrators. And again, my love of schools and how schools work really started to develop. I could see how schools worked differently and I could see the impact that would have on a community or on a kid. And so I changed my major, um, and I went to the University of Florida. So I got recruited there. So I'm a proud Gator, um, got my masters and undergrad there in ag education. And then I started my career as a teacher. Worked at a innovative high school in downtown Indianapolis that is called a big picture school.
And they had ag ed?
They, they actually didn't have ag ed when I got there. And so they wanted me to be the science lead. It was an innovative model. We didn't have bells. We didn't have textbooks. It was all at-risk kids. I learned a lot about myself. I learned a lot about my kids, the education system. Really cut my teeth on what it is to be school for a community. So from that, I then moved back to my home state and I started an environmental academy, an ag ed FFA chapter in Rio Rancho, New Mexico. Totally different setting, much more traditional setting of school. So a high school that's a lot more like ours here. And then in all that process, I met my wife, Robin, who's from Fairview, Oklahoma. So then to get my doctoral degree, um, I came back to work under Rob Terry and Shane Robinson, and some others in the College of Education, Del Fuquay, Diane Montgomery, um, to get my doctoral degree here. And so we were married, we moved back, got my doctoral degree, um, served at the junior high as a junior high principal. Served at Lincoln as a principal there.
I remember you were at Lincoln.
Yeah.
What timeframes were these? What years roughly?
That would have been two thousand and ten is when we came to start our doctoral degree. Two thousand and thirteen is when I started as an administrator. And then after my time as an administrator, I went to OSU to train teachers. And so that I've been training teachers and then recently I, I just wanted more interaction in a school. I was missing my first love and that's being in a school with teachers on the ground. So I'm now, um, I'm with a educational consulting firm called Maya Consulting. And basically we, we help a national audience of schools, um, design innovative school approaches. And so it's this concept that the people that know their schools best are the educators that are teaching every day in their schools. So rather than delivering some wonderful thing I've created to you, it's going to the schools and saying, let's be innovative and based on what you see every day, how would you improve your school? And then we provide that systematic project management process, funding management, and help make that reality kind of come to fruition. And so that's what I'm doing now is serving as educational consultant for districts, working to innovate and bring about change in their own schools.
So it seems like over the past year, as schools have been struggling with, you know, pandemic-related issues, as schools have been dealing with having to figure out how to pivot quickly to distance learning. Are you finding that you're consulting more or less differently? How's that looking?
More. Um, every school right now is in crisis. Every school, every school is figuring out, how do I, how do I do this? And I see it all across the country. It's so complicated. So my heart goes out to superintendents and administrators and teachers because it's just not easy. There are no easy answers. So to just raise the flag of like, never go back to school or go back to school full. It's so much more complex than that. So our consulting now has really turned to, um, we've really worked to look at the word risk. And this is where the big consulting, this is where I spent most of my time, the last six months, is just this road to recovery and reinvention. And so a lot of what we talk about is there's three important jobs that a school has to do. First, they have to just, they had to respond. What do we do tomorrow? This is happening to us. And, you know, our district has, we've responded. So then after that, it really starts the recovery process, which is, you know, we have all kinds of deficiencies now and it's nobody's fault. It's just been a really tough situation. So the second stage is how do you recover? And that's going to be a really important effort here. The third thing, we really talk to schools about, some schools will simply survive the pandemic and then go back to what they were. And that is incredibly unfortunate. Because the one golden nugget we have is, we all know, like, the biggest barrier to innovation is what we're already doing. Just our routine. So the hardest thing to do is to disrupt routine to make space for innovation. And what's so, so unique right now is everything is disrupted. Nothing is normal. And so there's this unique, in light of all the terrible effects of it, there is this unique opportunity for schools nationally to take that disrupted space and create and reinvent and become better as a result of the pandemic. And so that's where a lot of our work is, is, you know, really there's two kinds of schools. A school that goes back to what they were doing and just says, whoo, we survived that.
Right.
Or a school that's able to look at, during this time of massive disruption, what are we going to keep and what are we going to innovate with? So that post-pandemic, we're better than we were pre-pandemic. So that's been a lot of the work and that's where a lot of schools are asking for help, is to help facilitate, what about our pandemic response do we want to keep? And what do we want to get rid of? And how can we make ourselves better from what we learned? So that's what we're doing with districts.
Okay, so I've, I've, one of the things I've noticed is that there are several issues that have, that the, uh, the pandemic has really thrown into sharp relief. Uh, one of them being the digital divide. That's been huge. Figuring out, you know, the families who have access to, you know, internet, who have access to computers. I know the district is not a one-to-one district, so when, you know, this came down and there were families who didn't have a laptop, didn't have access, you know, they were able to help out, give those wifi hotspots, give, you know, Chromebooks out, but not necessarily one for every kid. So you've still got families who are having to, you know, where the kids are sharing, multiple kids are sharing devices and they're having to figure out how to work that. Just adding another level of, of stress, I think. The other thing seems to be figuring out how to compete with schools like Epic or the online schools and how to keep from losing your enrollment, frankly. When you're kind of struggling to do a distance learning thing, piece meal, and you're working out the bugs as you go. And people may not have the patience for that. What are you hearing from the districts that you're talking to? What are the biggest problems that they're running into?
Well, I think the digital divide has exposed how prepared you were as a district. And one thing, um, that's what I hear. So districts that are very, in a very good position with one-to-one learning, they already had structures in place that were pretty easy to transfer over. So those schools, we're talking about how do you transfer that back into a live instruction? So it's a little bit of an easier transition. Other schools that have not yet gotten to one-to-one, those are the ones that there's really a huge opportunity here. We've had to build capacity. So we have stretched that rubber band farther than it would have been stretched without COVID. So we're closer to one-to-one than we've ever been. And quite frankly, what I'm seeing is the federal government, foundations, the state government. If, if we miss the opportunity to get to one-to-one right now, it is a travesty. The federal government, foundations, companies, I mean, we're seeing people step up to make the journey to a one-to-one district more realistic than ever before. There will be grants, there will be funds, there will be projects. And so it's part of the reason I'm running. It's like, if we miss this opportunity, it's a really big miss. And so I think we, you have to capitalize on this opportunity because digital learning and, and technology is really on the forefront of everyone's mind. So while it's on people's mind, we need to really capitalize, build our infrastructure there.
And I would think while the funding's there too, while there's some, some dollars flowing.
Yeah, even, you know, with some of the CARES funds, and there's just lots of funds that are being set out to make sure that we're equitable. You know, and it's hard because I'm a parent, so I naturally want to advocate for my kid. I want the best for my kid. That's natural. But I'm also an educator, so the other part of me is thinking, I want the best for all the kids. And I think what, what was, the realization for me that was tough is when the district is running no COVID, you don't really have to see some of the inequities in your face.
Exactly.
But when we realized we were going to need a Chromebook of some kind and we didn't have one, my wife and I got online and spent fourteen hundred dollars and got our boys two Chromebooks, the best you could get.
Right.
In the back of my mind, the whole time, I'm just thinking of all the people that can't do that. And I can't imagine our boys, right now, like, both, my wife and I both work. We're doing everything we can to try to set them up as well as we can. I have a PhD in education, but I don't have a PhD in elementary education. So when I try to help my son spell the word light and explain to him that it's I-G-H-T, you know, we're doing our best and we have everything our kids would want or need. I can't imagine our boys having to share a laptop and accomplish these goals.
Right.
I just don't know. It would be really difficult to do. So I think the parent in me is like, I'm going to get my kids what they need. The educator in me knows the disparities that are being created, just by nobody's real fault, just by nature of the situation and us not being to that one-to-one, um, place. So I think that's important.
Well, I mean, with the pandemic, you know, people have had disruptions in employment. People have had, uh, you know, uh, extra medical bills, you know? They're having to deal with scrambling for, paying for daycare, frankly, because the schools are kind of a daycare provider for a lot of working parents, right? And you've got to come up with a day camp or you've got to pay a high school kid or a college kid or someone to come in, if you can afford to do that. And that's a luxury. That's even kind of, uh, you know, a luxury to be able to have that. But, you know, when you look at Chromebooks even, say you, you've got to, you know, yeah, I, I think, at first I thought, well, you know, Chromebooks are pretty cheap. People should be able to go get those if they really, really need one. And then you look at the statistics on the number of people in the US, working people with decent jobs, who can't get more than five hundred dollars in a savings account. And then you look at having to spend two hundred and fifty bucks if you get a low-end Chromebook. Okay, that's probably wiped out your whole savings and you may not have savings left anymore because your hours got cut.
Yes.
So, I mean, there are so many things coming to light. I was walking through Walmart last night and I saw all the coats that were on sale. They're putting all the coats on clearance. And I thought, you know, we need to come in and buy a bunch of coats because normally the public schools have coat drives going on, where the counselors will be, you know, identifying the kids who have outgrown their coats. You know, the sleeves are too short. They're, you know, the kids who need a new pair of shoes. There's usually someone keeping an eye on that and, you know, developing some type of a, a program or a drive to serve some of these needs. And right now, those kids are just home in their too-small coat.
Yeah.
You know, and so there is a lot that's being lost by not being in school. But at the same time, as you said, you have to do it safely. So having said all that and talking about all the things that are important to you, and I mean, how does this all lead you to school board? What do you want to accomplish on school board?
Well, I've been on the board before.
Right. How long were you on there and what?
A year and a half, I think.
Okay.
And so I think the, um, I see running for the board as, um, never before has it been more important to have a really competent, strong board. And when I look at, I have a seven and a six-year-old, I have friends, I see people struggling. I see families on all ends of the spectrum, just at their wits' end. I see teachers. I live right by Westwood. If people knew, I'm just going to start a live cam of the parking lot of Westwood. Because there are teachers there at eight at night, there are teachers there Saturday. Teachers are coming by and dropping off worksheets at our house on Sunday. And I think for me, I've been doing a listening tour. I mean, I think that's the most important thing I can do. So I've listened to everyone from, I am scared to death and we are, this is a pandemic. We cannot have school and they have legitimate backed up. I can feel your point. Then I talked to two working parents that are like, seriously, I can't, like, I'm losing my job. I think I have to quit. My kids are behind. My parents can no longer take care of my kids. I don't know what to do. Really frantic. I just see almost every sector has a story of just desperation of like, you know, Tara Mitchell, my son's kindergarten teacher, she just sent out a message. It's like, please know we are working. And everyone is just at their wits' end and we need innovative solutions. Like, we've got to get going. And I think the thing, the thing that's interesting for me when I really decided to run was, you know, I helped Ashley Moore run. And when she got that awesome opportunity to work at the state, I realized, I really see it as, um, it's a call to service. And I really think like what we've been talking about, not to just live in a city, but to be invested in a city. I had a, um, a mentor that told me, as you move forward, don't just live in a city, invest in a city. And so when I look at city council, that really, where can I best serve this town, right?
Okay.
Where, if, if I were a medical professional, there'd be some natural opportunities for me to serve. If I were an engineer, there'd be some natural opportunities for me to serve. I'm an educator and I'm helping schools nationally recover from COVID and build innovative models moving forward.
Right.
So the natural place for me to serve is to raise my hand and say, school board is a place I can help the town recover from this pandemic. So for me, that's a major reason I ran. The second reason is, I think a lot of people, challenges are complex. So the deeper your understanding is of school systems, the more complex you can see the problem. And so when I look at Stillwater, I've been a part of an inner-city school in Indianapolis. I've lived in Indianapolis. I've been, I've been a part of a school in Rio Rancho. I helped open that school. I've lived in that town. We've lived in Raleigh, North Carolina. I saw what the school systems were like there. I saw how they operated. Um, we've lived in Stillwater. We have kids in the system. I'm helping schools across the region recover. So I think with my education and with all of that, the answers aren't black and white. They're complicated and they're going to take a lot of work. And if you don't really know how the schools work, it's harder to come up with solutions. And so when I look at what's facing Stillwater Public Schools in the next year, it's a mountain and I see it as a place I can help and I can serve. And local government, I love seeing elections that are contested, you know?
I agree. I agree.
Jeanette jumped on and she said, guys, I think I'm running. And I told her, I said, way to go. That's awesome. Cause, you know, this is a volunteer position. If I get beat, that means the people wanted someone else to represent their voice. And that's government. It's not on my paid job. So I'll go back home and be fine. But I think stepping up and saying, I'm willing to serve and represent these voices is what we're called to do as citizens, especially in the area that you're, you work in. So
Right.
For those reasons, I, I threw my name in the hat and.
So I have a question about that though. Serving on any elected body has been really, I mean, it's, it's never super easy, right? You always have people have opinions about things who may not understand exactly everything that went into making your decisions. But the last year or so, it's been especially brutal. I mean, I've seen city council getting beaten up. I've seen school board getting beaten up. And not only that, but as you said, hearing those pleas from people who are either, even if they have the means saying, you know, my, my kids, they're, they're depressed. You know, they're getting behind. I don't know how they're going to do this, to the parents saying, I'm going to have to quit my job. You know, and we're going to, we're going to have less income. You know, there are some really compelling stories, but I mean, it's, it's a tough spot. So why are you crazy enough to step up and say you want to do this?
I'm, I've always been, I'm a solution finder and I'm a relationship builder and I'm very empathetic. So I can always, I, I feel everyone's position and I want to fix it. And so I think I, my natural empathy is feeling people saying, help. And I'm saying, okay, I can help. So I think that's why I run to that a little bit. And I think as a school administrator, you know, you naturally are a person that kind of runs to the fight or runs to the problem, you know, you just do that.
Right.
And I think for me, the, the flashiness or the coolness of being a school board member, that's gone because I've been on it. I, I know, I know what that's like. I know the job.
The glamour has worn off.
The glamour has worn off. It really is. I, I see a need. And to miss the complexity of what's going to happen the next couple of years is, could be really, could really set us back. And quite frankly, I think, I mean, I think our schools could be better. I do. I think our schools could be better. I've, I've been in districts that have these innovative dual-language programs. And I see districts, every college town I've lived in has had some incredibly innovative connection with the school district of that town. And I see that missing here. Like in Raleigh, there was a middle school that was also an innovation hub that was a partnership between the NC State and the public school system. And I just, I see opportunity. I see places where we can be better. And so, you know, already today, naturally, we talk a lot about COVID. That's front and center. But I think if we elect a candidate on COVID alone, that will be unfortunate. Because after COVID, that response is going on. We have a bond coming up eventually. We have teachers. We seriously have one of the most talented teaching corps in the state of Oklahoma. And how do we empower them? We should be the most innovative school in the state, right here by Oklahoma State.
Right.
And so there's so much opportunity there. But I think it does require a board that can push a little and, you know, just constantly say, hey, this is awesome, but what's next? You know, we want a little more, you know, a little more there. So I think for those reasons, when Ashley had to step aside, I thought, you know, I think it's, this is a chance for me to help serve if this, if the town wants that to happen.
Okay. And, and people need to realize too, that school board positions come with a lot of educational requirements. There's a lot of training you have to go through and it's a five-year commitment. You are signing away half a decade of your life when you run for city, when you run for school board.
We were just talking about with city council stuff, how there's not even really a training manual to be on the planning commission or anything like that. But I didn't know that about the school board. Oh, man.
Yeah.
I won't be putting my hat in the ring anytime soon.
It's a challenge. It really is a challenge. Now, one of the things I've seen, Marshall, you know, through watching what's been going on, you know, during COVID. And again, we're going to have to move past that at some point, hopefully. Hopefully we get to move past that at some point. But having said that, we talked about the, you know, what it's exposed, right? Those gaps, those cracks in the foundation. And it seems like Stillwater has a school district that works really, really well for kids who don't require anything extra or who don't have a lot of extra challenges. But if your kid requires something extra and that, when you look at the number of kids who have IEPs, you know, individualized education plans, for example, it's a large number of kids. So, I mean, it, it seems like it's really exposing how difficult a time the school has, any district, has wrapping its arms around how to solve those issues. So, I mean, what do you think can be done about that?
The thing that I, you know, immediately when you ask that question, as a school administrator, I have sat in hundreds of IEP meetings where we've assessed the kiddo and then we've tried to figure out like what resources best support that kid. And I've seen our special ed staff, which is, they are incredible. But I, I can, I see specific examples in my mind of where, you know, if our district had these resources or, and what I see in our district, just to give them their, their due is like, the special ed teachers I saw and the directors, they built partnerships out of their hide, right? It wasn't something we just paid for. I've seen sped teachers just out of their own hide, create interventions and get kids to therapeutic horse riding and get kids to the swimming pool. I mean, I've just seen our educators go way beyond their expectations to make that happen. But I think one of the things we've got to be really careful about in Stillwater is without COVID, just based on the education level of our town, our kids are going to do well enough for our district to rank well. So if we just kind of do the good old baseline, our kids, we just got, we have smart kids in this town. And it's just a very well-educated town. So, you know, where some schools, if they aren't innovative, their grade drops and they become, you know, in default on their grade. And I mean, it's, for us, we can, sometimes it's easy to lay back and just lean on how successful our scores can be. So I do think, um, we have to push through that and we have to think about as we move forward and what could we do with our elementary schools to uniquely serve different folks? And I've heard lots of ideas, um, but I, I don't see innovation at the core of, um, the vision sometimes. I think it comes from, I've been in other districts and I see what innovation looks like. So I think we need that slight nudge and, you know, Mark is really good at operations, very good at that. And you know Mark's going to keep us in a safe position. But like anybody with, with a safe perspective, you're going to have to have somebody pushing for the innovation. And so I think for me, that's always been the role I kind of play. I'm always wanting to innovate. And so I think we're going to have to find that balance, but, um, within the limitations, you know, we're not incredibly well-funded. Within those limitations, we've got to find ways. And there are, there are ways right now, if we make that a priority. And so one thing I always questioned when I was on the board last time is, we would make decisions, but I would always ask, what's the five-year, 10-year and 20-year goal? So if we're going to redistrict, I can be okay with redistricting, which throws parents in a tizzy. Cause like your house price, your house value could go down. I mean, it's crazy.
Right.
I'm okay considering that if you can tell me how that falls into a five, 10 or 20-year plan. Or like if we buy or sell property, I can be okay considering that. But you've got to help me understand how that fits into a five, 10 and 20-year plan. Cause I, all of these movements that are very disrupting need to be aligned with where we're headed long-term. And so that's one thing I'd like to kind of jump back into is really making clear. And a lot of my work as a consultant, it has to be a city, community, citizen-driven process of where's the 20-year flag and then where's And then working back, how do we get to the 10-year flag and the five-year flag? Which then ultimately helps our decisions for the one-year flag.
Okay.
So, I think that process helps us start to better serve if we can figure out where we're headed and direct our resources to that.
So just to kinda wrap it up, what is something that you would want people to know or understand about you and about the school board and how that works?
I think the biggest thing right now is, I'm helping districts deal with COVID. I'm passionate about recovering and reinventing. But I'm not a COVID candidate. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the next four years with this being an unexpired term. I'm looking at using COVID to innovate and become better, but I'm looking at, there are are far more issues than COVID that I'm ready to work on. So I feel like the conversation always goes to COVID. The other thing I would say is, I want our kids back in school. I do. I think everybody does. I think every educator you would ask, they want our kids back in school.
Absolutely.
So the question is not that, the question is, how do we get them there? And I know I am working with schools, that there are nine principles that you can follow, that we're helping schools follow, that drive you towards a safe and quicker opening of schools. But I think people have to know, you just can't put out a flag that says, "We're gonna go back to school." Because it is a complicated issue, and the person who's elected for this seat is one vote of five.
Right.
So you not only have to like be loud about what you want, you have to be influential in gaining support and gaining votes. And the, the teachers of this district are my dear friends. I cannot feel good about voting for something that I know puts these educators they feel uncomfortable with. And quite frankly, everything has an ebb and a flow. So if you just don't listen to the teachers, some of our best teachers can retire this summer. And then what are we gonna do? We're gonna have a young, unfilled teaching corps. So the thing I really would like people to know is that to get things done and to move our district forward, and it's never been more important than it is right now. We do not have the luxury of operating as normal. We don't have that luxury. We have to do some major things in the next year. I want people to know that that's a nuanced process, and you can't just yell a position loudly. And you can't be all one side or all the other side. You have to be influential, you have to be logical and rational, you have to find the middle ground. People you don't agree with, you have to listen to them, and you have to validate their voice. Because ultimately, if those voices aren't all coming together, you're not gonna move forward. And so, I think that's important for everyone to consider, because it's easy in the election cycle to say, "I'm the go-back-to-school candidate," or, "I'm the, we should save our teachers candidate."
That's so divisive.
It is. And we've gotta get out of that rhythm of, "I'm all this, or I'm all that." It's a complicated, nuanced, empathy-requiring task.
Okay.
And I look forward to that, and I hope the town sees that as they make their choice.
What's some of your favorite parts about the Stillwater community since you've been here? What, you know, maybe, maybe we have to pretend the COVID's not a thing, and we gotta go back and remember the good times. But what, what are the things that you've enjoyed about, uh, uh, being in the community? And, uh, what things do you look forward to?
Well, you know, we moved here in 2010. A few years back, um, I was doing really good as a faculty, so the natural thing is you get recruited to the next university and they give you more money and more research funding. So I was attracted to NC State. My wife and I just struggled over it, but we ended up moving, which is why I got out of that seat. We got there, and about eight months in, over a good, nice beverage at a brewery in downtown Raleigh, I just looked at Robin and we said, "Do you wanna live in Stillwater?" You know, and she said, she's like, "Yeah, I, I miss it." And I said, "I miss it too, you know, we, let's just go back." And she's like, "Well, that means you have to quit your job." And I said, "I know, it's okay, it's a job." My wife is an attorney and she does really, you know, she does well, and, and, "Let's get you back to your job at OSU, and let's go back to Stillwater where we wanna live. That's our home." And here we are in downtown Raleigh, with every food aficionado, every, everything, anybody, it's like the food capital, it's breweries everywhere, it's just incredible.
Yeah, it's really cool.
Come on, we've got a vast selection of chicken.
Thank you, I agree. And we just looked at each other and said, "It isn't home." And that's what we love about Stillwater is, I get my haircut at a place where I can talk to people by name, you know? The other day, I got a text message from people that help, you know, at the barber shop. "Hey, I saw your sign, I have a house right on this road, you're happy," you know, like, the person that's cutting my hair is concerned about my bid for school board.
Right.
And I, I, I can go to Wooden Nickel and, and I just know Allison, and she just helps me, I just, and I know her, and we go to Hideaway, and you know people, and you go to the schools, I know everyone at the schools, I, they're dear friends. And it's just, we have all the, we have so, not all, I won't say all, we have so many of the amenities that you get in a big metropolitan area. We have a world-class university, Performing Arts Center, really smart, cool people, diversity, we have a great public school system. But we still get to know the people that we are choosing to do business with. We get to go to a bike shop and be called by name, we get to, you don't get to do that in Raleigh, you get to never be really known by, you just get to disappear. And so for us, it's that tight-knit connectedness of Stillwater that, I, I quit my job and started consulting, cause we just wanted to get back home. And so, that love is part of why we immediately are like, "Okay, how do we start serving our town again?" So, that's a little bit of, why, for Stillwater, Stillwater's home for us, and that's kinda where we got there.
I know that you served as the principal at Lincoln Academy, and for people who don't know what Lincoln Academy is, it is an alternative high school in the Stillwater Public School District that serves at-risk kids and helps them, gets them back into school, helps them to graduate. What was that experience like for you, and what did you take away from working with the kids at Lincoln?
It's my sweet spot. You know, I, I left my doctoral program to go to Lincoln, because it's the best school in the district, in my opinion, for Marshall. I worked at an inner-city school in Indianapolis. All the kids were adjudicated. So here, and what I found out really quickly at Lincoln is I worked with some of the toughest kids in downtown Indianapolis. And I came to Stillwater and I found deeper addictions and sadder stories of homelessness, and just the brokenness of families and kids and
Yeah.
I just get emotional about it, but to help, dang, to help them is, you shouldn't ask me about kids.
I'm sorry.
No, it's good.
There's a lot in common.
There's so many kids that the, the normal system just struggles to, to get. And then to have them there and for them to be invested in, and I was at Lincoln a very short time, but, you know, to see, for example, what Carol Tally did there.
Right.
It's just mind-blowing. And, you know, the teachers at Lincoln are just cut from pure gold, you know, they just fight for those kids, and those kids experience success, and not all of them, you know, some of them are kids that had leukemia and just got behind in school, and they need help, the system doesn't fit them. And so Lincoln is this Swiss Army knife to just help kids. And so, Carol Tally and that team just built an incredible model, and I got to join their team for a year before I got moved to the junior high by Dr. Kane. But, that move was good for me, you know, I enjoyed it, but there's something about Lincoln that is just at the heart of just doing good for people. And I think that's what brought me to education, so.
Very good. You know, I actually, I did two years as an Americor with the American Red Cross. And I got recruited to teach a life skills class at Lincoln Academy. And I did it for, um, I don't know, for about a year. And I remember when I first went in, I, I did this goofy thing, you know, I go in like, you know, "Oh, you know, let's play a little icebreaker and learn how to get to know each other better." And, you know, so I'm, I'm just like, "Tell me a little bit about yourself," and I go around the class, and there are these kids, and you know, they're trying. You know, they're trying to play along and they're being polite. And then there's this one girl, and she just looks at me and she finally said, I, I, she goes, "I don't have anything to say," and I said, "It can be anything." I said, "Don't feel a lot of pressure, it can be like your favorite color, it can be anything." And this girl, you know, says, "Well, my," and she gives me my name, and she goes, "My favorite color's black." And she just kinda glares at me, and I thought, "Oh, no." Anyway, within, but I found that most of these kids, you know, I don't know what I expected, I really don't. But I realized through spending time at Lincoln, that there were an awful lot of kids there who were there because maybe they weren't doing what people expected them to do as high school students, as teenagers. Maybe they weren't doing a great job of fulfilling those expectations, but part of the reason was, or a lot of the reason was, because so many of them were, were fulfilling these other obligations that were way beyond what should have been expected of them. They were carrying adult burdens.
Yeah.
There were kids who were couch surfing, there were kids who, um, you know, there, there was a girl, I remember the last day of school. There was this one girl, and she was, oh my God, she was so smart, and she was so angry. You know, and I look over at her, and she's sitting on the floor, like in the hallway, and she's crying. And I said, "So," you know, I'm trying to cheer her up or something, I'm like, "So are you gonna be back next year, are you looking forward to this, what are you gonna do?" And she said, "I'm not coming back." And she was the only person in her family who was working, she was a waitress at Shortcakes. And she was supporting her entire family and had a couple of little brothers. You know, and she said, "I'm gonna go to school online," and you don't know what that means.
Yeah.
You don't know if she's gonna finish or what. And, uh, you know, so I, I was really, yeah, Lincoln has a special place in my heart too. Because you see the breadth of the issues that kids deal with. And you're right, it can be anything from a health issue to a kid who just, you know, they just wanna get it over with, and they just wanna, that self-paced curriculum that Lincoln can offer works better for them, to kids who are just carrying really heavy burdens.
Yeah.
And just can't be at a regular school and make that happen. You know, and then I would see the kids, and I'd be like, "Hey, where you been? I haven't seen you lately." Or, you know, "You were, you were absent last week, what happened?" And they're like, "Uh, you know, I, I had to go to court." "What for?" "Truancy," you know? And you just kinda, "Okay."
Well, it's interesting too, cause I mean, you know, that setting, and then you go to the junior high, and you, you know, you see the same, those teachers are doing that same Lincoln-based work. In fact, Lincoln is, kinda has a subsidiary at the junior high. But you just realize, you know, schools play such a huge role in the town's ability to love its citizens. It's just, the school is this, it's bigger than learning, it's bigger. You know, and sometimes we say, "Well, teachers aren't just babysitters," and that's true, they aren't. But the, the, the more complex issue is they're not just teachers either. If anyone didn't know, they know now, that schools play a major part in the life cycle of a town. And how you recruit talent, how your top engineers get to go to work while you help grow their children emotionally and socially and, and educate them. But I think our town is really, it's, it's on their mind now that a school is such a huge part of the life cycle of how we love each other and serve a town and build a system that serves everybody. And so, that's never been more obvious than it is now, that the importance of, whether you have kids or not, it is a part of the life stream of this town.
It, it sounds like your, your heart and soul is just really in education and everything it stands for, everything it accomplishes.
Yeah, it's.
And that it takes a village.
It does, for sure.
It takes a village to raise our kids.
And you know the city council, they're talking about internet for the town. Well, it's like, all of that's interconnected. How do you deliver that? Well, the schools are a great way to then enact that service from the city council. So, there's so many connections, it's just a life cycle, and every little organism has to be there, or the, it starts to break down, which we see now, it's just tough.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
You're now, uh, number two.
Yes, you're.
I love it.
Thanks again to Marshall Baker for joining us. Up next, we've got an interview with Kristy Hawkins, candidate for Stillwater City Council. Before we part, I'd like to ask a favor. If you liked the show, tell your friends about it. Our vision at Studio Stillwater is to elevate local voices and tell local stories. This is where you come in. Maybe you know a friend who has an amazing story to share, or maybe that story is yours. We wanna hear it. You can get in touch with us via email, studiostillwaterok@gmail.com, or, for the socialites, slide into our DMs on Facebook, Twitter, or Instagram. You can also send us a voice message by going to anchor.fm/studiosstillwater. Just hit the add message button to record right from your phone or computer. We would love to feature your voice in a future episode, even if it's just saying how awesome we are. Finally, check out the show notes. There you will find links to everything we discussed on the show. Thanks again for joining us. Until next time.